Good evening, and today is Monday, September 22nd, 2025. Welcome to the regular meeting of the ZBAA. Call this meeting to order. Samantha, can we have a roll call, please?
Chris Bilecki.
Here.
Don Bemis.
Here.
Brandy Burrows.
Here.
Clark Gruber.
Here.
Lisa Kupiaras.
Here.
Amy Nichols.
Here.
Randy Timmer.
Here. This time I take a motion of the approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Support.
It's been moved and supported, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, moving on. Has everybody had a chance to look at the meeting minutes of our last meeting of August 25th?
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from August 25th.
Support.
It's been moved and supported, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Moving on, all right. Interested citizens in the audience will be heard on items not on the agenda.
Good evening. Amy Brown, 114 Michigan Avenue. As you know, I'm running again for mayor. First of all, I want to thank all of you for serving on the ZBAA. Thanks for all your hard work, I truly appreciate it. Just wanted to talk about what my priorities are. I've always been passionate about housing. Kate and I just returned from the Michigan Municipal League Conference in Grand Rapids, and I made good context there about housing. So, we have really made some progress. And there are about four parcels that we're still working on. I'm on the board of the Senior Services, and as you know, we've made progress with the apartments for the seniors. I'm also excited about actually maintaining the jobs we have. During the last two years, I've visited probably 90% of our manufacturers. One thing that's really exciting is that Lake Michigan Linen Service, that's owned by Ashley Greer, got the contract to do the linen service for Western Michigan University. So that's huge news. She's very modest about it, but we have a lot to be proud of in South Haven. I'm also supporting Eddie Polk for Ward 1. He's the Commissioner on the Planning Commission. He's lived here 40 years, and he has worked at Palisades for decades. Also, Tom Capps, like me, is a former co-owner of a business, and he's the former Assistant Treasurer for Geneva Township. Like Eddie, he's lived here 40 years or more, and he knows a lot of people. He knows South Haven values. So, you can call me and reach out to me anytime you have questions. And again, thank you for your service.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, well, moving on then. Unfinished business, I see we have none, which will take us to new business. 554 Williams Street, Dimensional Variances. Kelly?
Thank you. Cindy Compton of the Overlook 554 LC, who is here tonight along with Todd Huberton, who is a co-owner, has applied for variance seeking relief, variances seeking relief from standards related to front yard setbacks and height in the Central Business District. This is Section 703, as well as pools and accessory structures. These are Sections 2112 and 2111 of the zoning ordinance, and their plans are to develop three attached dwelling units and some recreational structures. In addition, Cindy is seeking an extension of the variance that this board granted last May in 2024 to permit a fourth story to allow for storage space in addition to the elevator shaft and mechanicals. The parcel at 554 Williams is unique in that it has three front yards and a approximately 10-foot elevation change between Williams Street and Broadway, which, as the applicant has noted, has made development challenging. So I won't read each individual variance request right now, but I will put them up on the screen for you so that you can see what was in the staff report. And I will note that we need to hold a public hearing, and then we will need to review each of the five requests individually against the eight standards from Section 2408 of the zoning ordinance. And any motions that are made this evening need to state our reasons or findings in support of our decision. So, we need to make a decision on each request separately.
Sounds good. All right. I suppose we should probably hear from the applicant before our public hearing, so...
All right, I'm out of practice with this. I'm talking into a microphone. I did not include last year's packet with this year's, but there was a link to it. So if you had, hopefully you had a chance to review that. And essentially, none of the elements of the project have changed since our approval last year, but the ordinances have changed. So, there was a Central Business District Design Standard adopted January 1st, and there were ordinances that affected locations of pools. So if you were to look at the little tighter drawings that we have today, they're essentially the same elements that were in the sketches that we put forth last year. So, that was the challenge. And we waited to start working on our designs until we had the variances. We started interviewing engineers, design teams, builders, and we decided that we were going to go with Newco Design Build. They're doing the project at North Bailey. We really like working with their team. So, we really didn't even start working on the physical design of the structure until January, and I found out in March that those ordinances had changed. So like, we put the brakes on right away because I don't want to put money into something that we might not do. I do want to mention, and I saw Brad put it in the packet, that my husband Stan and I are planning on living in one of these units. I take it very personally how we work on this as a landmark design. So, you have any questions? Oh, there's one more thing I want to add to. We're requesting the height variance of 55 feet. We're working with a 45-foot tall building, that hasn't changed. We're always working on that, but because you start with the medium height between the top of the hill and the bottom of the hill, it affected the height by five feet. And then, we were at a meeting with Newco, and they said, "Well, you should just ask for 55, it makes it easy." But our intentions are still to have a building that's 45 feet tall. But we have to... I originally filled out an application asking that the mean elevation of 600 feet, if you look at a topo map of this property, the mean elevation's 600 feet, and we wanted to be able to count from that 600 up by 45 feet, but it doesn't work that way with the ordinance.
And I guess, did that change from last time to this time on where the building height was calculated? Because when I look at the May of 2024, and then this one, and then the drawings, I'm just trying to figure out what changed when one was calculated and then it's calculated again.
It's where you start measuring. You don't start actually at the ground. It's because you have to count it, and I didn't realize that at the time.
At the original time, so that was a miscalculation of...
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions right now? I guess at this time I would entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Should I sit down?
Yes. Make a motion to open the public hearing on the 554 Williams Street Variances Request.
Second.
It has been moved and supported. The public hearing is now open. Anybody wish to speak on this?
Do we have to vote on the motion?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, please, yes. All those in favor of opening the public hearing?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion passed. Public hearing is now open. Thank you, guys, appreciate you. I'm assuming since no one is coming up, I would take a motion to close the public hearing.
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
Support.
It's been moved and supported, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Motion passes, and we move on. So, I guess... So we basically have five different variances in front of us. A front yard setback for Williams Street, a front yard setback for Broadway Street, the overall height variance, the swimming pool, and the pool house. So, knowing that we have to take these one by one, let's start with the front yard setback of Williams Street.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, may I ask a few questions before we get started?
Absolutely.
The zoning ordinance used to define one front yard. It was typically the street that the address was from. Was that changed in the ordinance?
Yes, that is something that is different in this ordinance as opposed to the previous. And so, corner lots now have front yards and a side and a rear, but this particular lot is like a corner lot and like a through lot in that it has three fronts, but really not a rear yard. So, it is truly an unusual lot. And I will look and see if I can get a picture of the lot up on the screen for you.
And how many stories are permitted in this area?
The Central Business District permits three stories and 45 feet.
Okay. I was looking at the photos and tables here, just a little bit of history for us to keep in mind when we're looking at the number of stories. For example, the one, what is it, next to Nichols, which is called Five Stories. When that was approved, it was officially a three-and-a-half-story building because the bottom floor with the garage was considered a basement, and it was very commonly done on sloped lots. And I think that's also the reason it had that funny roof on the top, because that made it, as far as the Planning Commission was concerned, it made it a half-story rather than a full story. And the same or similar is true on many of the other condos downtown. They were built into the slope with the result that they were officially one story shorter than anybody would think by looking at the building. So that may help a little clarification on people.
Kelly, going back to the original on this... Oh, sorry. Going back to the original on variance on this, can you refresh my memory on the original setbacks that were asked for? Because I don't remember a setback in the last one. So this is...
There wasn't.
The setbacks are new, okay?
Yes.
It was only for the height.
Only the height, yeah, okay, all right, thank you.
There was a second, there was a second request that had to do with ground floor residential in, on a street that fronted Broadway, but that is a requirement, that's a standard that was removed from the zoning ordinance as well, and so that variance is no longer necessary.
Right, okay, all right. And from my understanding, in the CBD, basically what we're looking for is zero setbacks. It would be the typical in this zoning district.
Zero would be typical, and that is the reason for the five-foot maximum.
Right.
Because we, you know, we're looking for just kind of for certain aesthetic typically on a downtown street. So, it does allow for a zero setback, but also provides a maximum.
Right, okay, all right.
I have a question. So this is the Central Business District, and if you look at the zoning map, it's just that little spot there that is still Central Business District. And I understand that last year there was discussion about the first floor being, you know, non-residential in the Central Business District, and that was discussed. But what causes this to still be the Central Business District? I mean, was there intention here that there would actually be something going in that's a business?
I believe that to be the case. I mean, the zoning district itself hasn't changed. It is zoned Central Business District, and a rezoning hasn't been requested.
The old master plan, this was included in the Central Business District in part in anticipation that the businesses might extend across Dyckman to where the trailers are now and even across the bridge.
Okay.
Because the original master plan envisioned a potentially larger business area, so this was considered in the business district because it was immediately adjacent. The city hasn't developed that way.
Yeah, it's just, it was interesting to me that that still is, that explains it. Yeah, because everything around it is either R2 or RM1. And, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Does everybody feel comfortable with starting on number one and working our way through the list?
Yes.
Yeah, well, I might suggest doing one, two, four, and five, and then three.
Okay, we can do that. As long as we do them all individually?
As long as we get them all correct.
I agree, actually, with that.
Okay, all right. So we'll do one, two, four, and five, and come back to number three. All right. All right, well, starting with number one, then on the front yard setback on Williams Street. So they're basically looking at up to a maximum of 25 feet 6 inches. Looks like that would be the max, and the minimum would be seven foot 11. So with the current being a maximum of five feet, it's substantial but understandable. So, starting on number one. There are exceptional, extraordinary circumstances or conditions applying to the property in question that do not generally apply to other properties in the same zoning district.
I would concur, I think this is one of the oddest pieces of property in the city right now.
Yeah, truly. I truly believe that, yeah. Two, that the condition or situation of the specific piece of property for which the variance is sought is not of so general or recurrent nature as to make it reasonably practical for the formulation of a general regulation of such conditions or situations.
I think Clark's rule applies to that as well.
I would put a caveat on that, though. For residential, yes, that's how it would be.
Right.
For business, it's not.
Right.
Many businesses are built on multiple levels.
Yep.
And you could, it probably would not be economically feasible there, but businesses could be put in, and then they would be up to the edge.
Agreed. Number three, that such a variance is necessary for the preservation enjoyment of substantial property right similar that is proposed by other properties in the same zoning district.
I would agree that that's been met.
I would agree it's been met on what we're looking for.
Very, in this very specific situation.
Yes.
Hence the request for the variance.
Right, yeah.
For residential, I think that's appropriate.
For residential, yes.
Right.
I'm still troubled by the fact that there are other allowable uses on this property.
Yes, yes, there are.
How long has this property been vacant?
We've been here 45 years, and the only thing it ever had on it was a dentist's office.
Yeah, so, yeah, probably not a whole lot of options.
Yeah.
Even though there could be.
Right.
Forty-five years or half.
Theoretically, yes.
Yes, yeah, exactly. Hence why we're here. All right, moving on, then. The strict compliance with the requirements of this ordinance would unreasonably prevent the owner from using the property for a permitted purpose.
I disagree. But I understand.
Right, yeah, yep. Any other comments on that?
This is a tricky situation because, yes, could be strictly followed, but would that take away from the enjoyment of the property as a residence because he wants to live in a commercially designed property right up to the street? It's a little bit of a tricky one.
Or could only one home be built on this and then comply with what's happening? We've had multiple projects, in fact, this was even part of a project with Matt O'Connor, you know, and it's always been a similar situation. You know, with that property, I can't see anything less than X number of condos of this size that permit that. So although, you're right, could one house be on there, but, yes, but I don't think that's a reasonable finding.
Right. I also don't believe it would ever be allowed.
Hmm.
And I think the second part of that is, or would render conformity unnecessarily burdensome or impractical.
Right.
Impractical is the part we're looking for.
Right.
One house is really impractical on that lot.
Right, yeah. Yeah, and I think as we're finding, so is a commercial building.
Yes, exactly.
All right. Moving on, then. The variance will not be significantly detrimental to adjacent property in the surrounding neighborhood.
I don't think it will be with what's there presently.
Yeah. The variance will not impair the intent and purpose of this ordinance.
Again, I agree in this very specific situation with this very specific property and application.
Right. And also because the ordinance has been significantly altered.
Right.
Under the current ordinance, it doesn't make nearly the difference it would under the old.
Correct.
Good point.
All right. Moving on, that the variance requested is the minimum amount necessary to overcome or mitigate the difficulty. Again, we're on the setback right now on Williams Street.
For a residential unit, I agree. We have that in other areas all around the downtown.
Right. Any other discussion on that? And lastly, the immediate practical difficulty causing the need for the variance request was not created by any action of the applicant.
True.
Right.
Currently empty.
Right.
And all of it's changed because the zoning changed.
Right.
The zoning changed the lot.
It didn't change the zoning.
Right, and the property, the lot, is as it has always been.
All right. So, that was for the front yard setback on Williams Street. Kelly, would you recommend that we vote on each one of these as we have completed the list of requirements?
I would recommend that, yes. And I would recommend, again, stating specific reasons for your decision in the motion.
Okay, all right. Well, at this point then, I would entertain a motion on number one, front yard setback of Williams Street.
Clark, you can do it.
Not that we're all staring at her.
You've got the words down there somewhere.
I'm looking at, I'm looking at this, you know, because we have our findings here.
Right.
You know, I guess I would make a motion to approve the front yard setback variance for 554 Williams Street Dimensional Zoning Variances Request. And due to the fact that all findings A through H were found to be met.
Support.
You don't want me to list each one of those?
Can we add one thing, since there are three different front yards? Can you specify in your motion that it is the Williams Street front yard? Or is that necessary to do that as opposed to just the front yard setback?
I can add that.
Hold on, Clark, before you launch into that.
I'm not gonna, I'm gonna wait, here I saw somebody's finger on the button, go for it.
I would recommend developing the findings a little bit more to explain why you believe that they've been met. Really, your motion was somewhat conclusory that they've been met. It would be helpful to explain why you believe they've been met.
Is the fact that it's the unique nature of the property, would that be...
Otherwise, you want me to list each one of them in each one of the areas?
I would leave it to the discretion of the motion maker, how detailed you want to get. To the extent that the rationale might be the same for multiple of the findings, I think that would be sufficient, or if you want to go one by one, that would be okay as well.
Remember, we gotta do this five more times, so...
We have to, I mean, if we're stuck, we're stuck.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, I guess I would have to, I'm still developing my motion then. You needed me to do this. I guess I would... I'd make a motion to approve the front yard setback with the front yard being on Williams Street. I think that's what we determined. For the Dimensional Zoning Variances for 554 Williams Street. Having met each of the variance findings, A, due to the extraordinary circumstances of the property.
Clark, could I...
Yes.
Suggest maybe a way to put that? Item number one, there are exceptional or extraordinary circumstances or conditions. It is an exceptionally shaped lot. It's bounded on three sides by streets. And with the result that if you were to require a large front yard setback, you'd be in the street on the back of the property. So it's not well-shaped.
And I think we have to be careful with that, though, because we're asking for a larger setback than what's already allowed, so...
Correct, but in order to even maintain the allowed setback would be extremely difficult due to the fact that the property is essentially surrounded on three sides.
Yeah, yeah. I think that's the key right there, is maintaining that. Not necessarily that it's, that we're looking, a larger one would be better.
Seems like someone else should have thrown this out.
You're doing great, Clark.
I'm willing to take one for the team. I think Don's words were quite well. I'm not sure what you're doing over there, Samantha. Yeah, I know, we're both... I do better in planning. They have all these areas where they're normally laid out for us. I guess then, due to the fact that the front side setback is required to meet the constraints of the building request. I mean, do you want me to go through each one of these then? Because I think next time we do this, we're gonna have to start taking some notes prior to coming back. to coming back around again, right?
Yes.
So, the next one will go easier, Cindy. And B, the the condition is met in that this property would not be a recurrent in nature. C, that this property would be necessary for this particular project to align with other properties within the zoning district. D,
Is there a...
That strict compliance to the requirements would prevent the owner.
Okay, thank you.
And it would be too burdensome and impractical. E, this project is not significantly detrimental to any of the adjacent properties. F, this variance does not impair the purpose or intent of our ordinances. And G, the variance isn't the minimum amount necessary to overcome or mitigate this difficulty. And H, uh, the, uh, requester did not create the action required for this variance.
On G there, did you say is or isn't?
What was that?
I think, yeah.
On G, it needs to be is instead of isn't, I believe.
Yeah.
Make sure Samantha gets that.
That was my new and improved motion.
Yeah, anybody want to second that?
Sure, support. As long as I don't have to repeat it.
All right. Everybody, any more discussion on this before we vote on this?
I may be voting against some of these.
Okay.
However, this is majority rule. So, if the ZBA moves to grant a variance, it really doesn't matter if somebody disagrees by the time the vote is over.
Okay, fair enough. Any other discussion? All right. Well, so, I am not gonna make you read that back. I feel like everybody pretty much knows where we're at. We are still on number one, the front yard setback on William Street. So Samantha, if we could have a roll call on this.
Bellicky?
Uh, yes.
Bemis?
Yes.
Burrows?
Yes.
Gruber?
Yes.
Kupiars?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Timmer?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, number one. So guys, we could do this all over again now with number two, the front yard setback for Broadway Street. Very similar circumstance once again. Requesting a, a larger setback than what is allowed. Assumption is we're probably going to find very similar things, but let's start all over again at number A. There are exceptional or extraordinary circumstances or conditions that are applying to the property in question that do not generally apply to other properties in the same zoning district.
Well, the property hasn't changed shape since our last vote. There you go.
That's a great one, hasn't changed shape. All right, we need, we need to note that. I'm pretty sure we can find that that has been met once again. Uh, moving on to B, that the condition or situation of the specific piece of property for which the variance is sought is not so of general recurrent nature as to make it reasonably impractical for the...
Yeah.
Yes, you know, all right.
Nobody's invented a new one of these since our last vote.
Yeah, yeah.
B's met.
B is met, all right, all right. C, that such a variance is necessary for the preservation and enjoyment of substantial property right.
Yes.
Yes.
All right.
This is the one I have trouble with.
Right.
Because there is another way the property could be developed, recognizing it hasn't happened.
Right.
For the reasons it hasn't happened, but there still is the opportunity to do that.
I, I agree. I completely agree with that.
The, um, what, on, on that one, C, I mean, a B, right? No, C, we're talking about.
Yes.
Um, that is the thing that I always come back to on this, going through this, um, preparing for the meeting, is that, um, it is, the properties in this, in the, well, it's not the same zoning district, but it is the same vicinity.
Right.
So even though it's a CBD, and that's what I keep coming back to, that, um, it's surrounded by a lot of other very similar types of buildings.
Right, yep. All right, D, the strict compliance with the requirements of this ordinance would unreasonably prevent the owner from using the property for permitted purpose.
Yes.
All right.
Unnecessarily burdensome, yeah.
Moving on to E, the variance will not sign, be significantly detrimental to adjacent property and the surrounding neighborhood.
The project as, as it's proposed would not itself be detrimental. The detriment that I have trouble with, but over the years the city has not agreed with me, is that we are again hemming in the central business district.
All right, F, the variance will not impair the intent and purpose of this ordinance.
Agree.
I agree. G, the variance requested is the minimum amount necessary to overcome or mitigate the difficulty.
Yes, agree.
And A, the immediate practical difficulty causing the need for the variance request was not created by any action of the applicant.
Agree.
Agree, yep.
All right. So, guys.
Clark's taking notes.
Yeah, all right. Way to go, Clark. Are you, you gonna, you gonna handle this one again?
I think I, I got one more here.
Okay, no problem, no problem.
All right, see if I can do this again. I would make a motion to grant the front yard setback for Broadway Street as part of the dimensional zoning variance request for five-five-four William Street. As the application has met the dimensional requirements of A, an exceptional circumstance applies to this particular project. Uh, under finding B, it is not a recurrent condition. C, this project and specific property is similar to other properties in the area. D, strict occurrence of the ordinance would be burdensome. E, the variance, uh, would not be detrimental to adjacent properties. F, the variance would not impair the intent and purpose of our variance, of our ordinance, I'm sorry. G, this is the minimum amount, uh, requested for the project to overcome and mitigate. And H, uh, the applicant did not cause the reason for the variance request. By, uh, no, no action. Is that better? Okay-ish?
So I think for the first motion, you had mentioned something at the beginning, that that it was, um, based on the unique shape of the property. So I would, I guess, suggest that that be the basis for all of those findings, I guess.
Okay.
Exceptional shape is the phrase.
Exceptional shape.
Within your probably A area.
You want to start that all over again?
All over.
Kidding.
I think that was an exceptional comment that I made the first time, got lucky. Can that be added to the beginning?
You, you have, nobody, the motion hasn't been seconded yet, so you can just continue.
I would just want to add that, uh, also to the beginning of my motion, also due to the, uh, exceptional shape of the property.
Support.
Give Samantha just a minute here to get that all taken care of. All right, if we could have a roll call, Samantha.
Bemis?
No.
Burrows?
Yes.
Gruber?
Yes.
Kupiars?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Bellicky?
Yes.
Timmer?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. All right, so, we are going to skip on to number four now. So, we're, we're now seeking a variance for the swimming pool, which would be located in the front yard. Apparently swimming pools are not permitted in the front yard of any zoning district. So, that is where we are at now.
Can I ask just a quick clarification?
Absolutely.
You say this property has three front yards?
Yes.
Okay. And those front yards would be where?
William Street, Broadway, and Dykman.
And Chris, could you please get your mic?
Sure, Lisa. There's three front yards, right?
Correct.
So it can't be by ordinance in any of the front yards?
Correct.
So this becomes an exceptional property again, correct?
Yes, and so the front yard begins, um, at the horizontal plane of the front of the building, moving forward, toward the street. So...
But you're saying there's three of them?
Three front yards, so this portion of the yard here on William Street is a front yard, this portion here on Dykman is a front yard, and this portion here on Broadway is a front yard.
Okay.
Now, this pool is on essentially the Warren Center side of the property, if you will, is that correct?
Correct, yes.
So if variances are granted for front yards, this pool would be located in the area that, for which a variance has been granted, is that correct?
Say that again?
Okay, if we have a variance for William Street and a variance for Broadway Street, saying we're granting a variance on front yard setback.
Yes.
And if this pool is within that setback, from the, from the standpoint of the variances, it is practically not in the front yard.
Yeah, it's kind of my point.
Can I add something on this? I, is that okay?
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
Um, I looked up in the, that section twenty-one-twelve in the zoning ordinance, and number three states, for lots with frontage on the Black River, there's probably other verbiage before it, but, for lots with frontage on the Black River, or, there was something else, I just, it, it, this does have frontage on the Black River. Swimming pools may be constructed on waterfront side only if approved as a special land used by the PC.
This is on the dry side of the street, yeah.
No. This is not considered a waterfront lot.
Right.
No, but isn't it on the waterfront side of the property?
Well, it, there is a water view of that property, but it's not considered waterfront because it's on the east side of the road, and the river's on the west side of the road.
Right, right. I, I in, I interpret that as being the, as opposed to on the Broadway side. That would not be if we're, you know, waterfront, water view.
I, I don't believe this parcel has any waterfront.
The intention in the old master plan and the old zoning ordinance, for history's sake, waterfront properties were, if, you could say the properties that were wet on one property line. So this would not be a waterfront property in that it does not touch the river.
Okay, so it, it does, it, even though it has a water view or a water perspective.
Correct.
Okay.
That was the intention.
That's a good way of explaining it, Mr. Bemis, that, a wet line.
Yeah, thank you.
Kelly, would you mind popping the, the picture up that you just had before this? I'm sorry.
Uh, the table?
Yeah.
Oh, that's a problem.
It had, that basically had the site plan.
Oh, yes, yep, with the pool.
Yep, yep. All right. Question for the applicant. I'm assuming that in the, uh, the lower half there, that's a pickleball tennis court?
Yep.
Something of that nature?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right. Has, has there been any consideration into moving a pool over there where it would not necessarily be on a front? Again, just thinking out loud here.
I don't think that's allowed in a side yard either, is it? No, because we, putting, if we switched them, we were concerned that maybe pickleballs would go off the sides.
Okay.
We did think about that, and we thought that would be a quieter screen for the pickleball court because we can put, uh, greenery there. It would be, yeah. And you got to remember that that's elevated ten feet above the sidewalk, too.
Right, right.
Um, when the, the site plan was approved and the special use permit was approved for the previous owners, they actually had approval to have the pool on the corner. Do, but, yeah, I mean, that's just, so we weren't thinking that we were being, um, you know, way out there by thinking that we could have a pool at that location.
Okay, all right.
Sort of a grandma-grappa pool.
Fair enough.
All right, any other questions?
Kelly, when would it become the side yard?
It would become the side yard, that, where the, the proposed pickleball court is, is the side yard. So if you imagine, I think you can kind of see, oh, that's not... I'm, well, so I see my cursor going, and it, the, there's a delay for the screen. Which is really bizarre.
You've got it there.
So, it doesn't seem like I can do that, um, because I'm showing the corner here, okay? So then if we kind of brought it over toward the lot line, the sideline here, it's just not gonna work, sorry, guys. But if you imagined a line that's kind of almost where this existing line is shown on the plan, then everything behind it is side, kind of between these two markings. There's not a lot of side yard there.
Right. You could move it. Ever, I, everything's relative, right?
Right.
Ever so slightly to put it in the side yard and thus not require a variance.
If essentially everything was moved to the east, is that, is that what you're saying?
Correct.
So...
It's everything except the building, I mean.
Yeah, all the, the two, the two points we're discussing now. Because a pool can be in a side yard, correct? That wouldn't require a variance.
Right, the pool can be in a side yard with no variance.
So, yeah, ba, basically what Kelly's saying is if you take the plane of the front of that building and you came straight down to the road, anything behind that plane is the side yard.
Just a point of clarification.
Yep. Any other questions on that before we?
The question, on the site plan there, is it marked, is the pool at least ten feet away from any other property line, does that pertain to the situation?
As it's shown here, and I know the numbers are really teeny, but it is marked ten feet away from the property lines, and it's more than four feet from the structure.
Okay, that was a good call out by Lisa on the section 2112, which was referenced in the packet, but looking closer, making sure that's referenced in any motion that we may make later in the meeting, so it's clear what our variance is granted, and it doesn't pertain to anything related to that requirement from 2112.
Any other questions before we go through our list?
We're saying that where the pool is right now, then, is considered the side yard, so it does not need to be moved.
No, currently, the pool is, in the proposed drawing, is located in the front yard.
Okay, but...
The pickleball court would be actually located in the side yard right now.
The large rectangle.
Right.
On the south side, that's a pickleball court, the smaller skinny rectangle on the east corner, southeast corner, that's the proposed pool.
Right, I understand that.
So in order to obviate the need for the pool variance, the, one possibility would be if the pickleball court were moved east, and the pool were moved southeast until it was behind the front yard set, front yard line, is that correct?
Correct.
Practicality and desirability of that, I'm not going to weigh in on.
Right.
It does get a little bit confusing, though, considering the setback with the front line was just essentially changed by the variance we just granted.
Correct, except for, within any home, you always take the plane of the house, of the front of the house, from that point back is side yard, depend, no matter what the actual setback would be.
Correct, that's right. So the variance that was granted previously allows them to have more front yard, but it doesn't change the fact that it is still front yard.
Right, right, yep.
Kelly, a question. Is there anything in the zoning ordinance around pickleball courts that would pertain to this property?
This...
The placement of a pickleball court?
The zoning ordinance is very quiet about courts, about, we don't have any pickleball specific regulations.
Thank you.
Yes.
I'm glad you mentioned that, because I wanted to say, too, that when we were talking about, I, I realized that was a pickleball court, but then I'm thinking of the vicinity, and, um, location of pickleball courts is very difficult because of the noise.
Not here in South Haven, there's no ordinance, so it's not...
No, there's not an ordinance, but there is that issue that is always part of the conversation, and there are a lot of people, there's a lot of residences in this area, and I, I don't know if, um...
That's an issue the owner will have to deal with, but there's no ordinance.
Yeah.
As I recall, as I recall, there was actually a complaint about the courts of the school interfering with the noise there with the school functions.
Right, yeah.
But again, there's no ordinance there, but, but you're right, it is a concern, and I'm sure we're going to hear more about it.
Alright, so if there are no other questions pertaining to that, let's move on to the list. So, number A, there are exceptional extraordinary circumstances or conditions applying to the property in question that do not apply generally to other properties in the same zoning district.
Mr. Chair, before we get into discussion, so that perhaps it will be easier when we get to the time to make a motion, I would suggest that whoever makes the motion, go into a bit more detail on the rationale behind the findings on this one.
Okay.
Whereas for the first two variances, the rationale was pretty much the same based on the shape of the lot.
Right.
I think the rationale is going to be a little bit different for each of the findings. So I would suggest, when the motion's made, that the motion maker not just restate the finding, but explain why they believe the finding has been met.
Okay.
So to the extent that somebody wants to take notes while we're discussing the findings to make a motion, that might make that a little bit easier.
Sounds great, thank you.
I'm going to take some notes, but others, it would be great if you could also take notes.
I'm happy to support you.
Never, thank you, I was never that great of a note taker. Not a summa cum laude kind of guy.
Alright.
Only man.
Alright, so right now, we are on number A.
I'm, I'm not sure how, you know, I don't think this applies to other, other areas with three different front yards, and trying to figure out where to put a pool. The property fits a pool, where, where would you put it with three different front yards? I mean, I can't think of another property.
Another...
Where?
In this case, the pool could move southeast. But the pickleball court would also have to move, if we were to...
If it could move, I mean, there's also parking requirements, too.
Right, but the pickleball, pickleball court is of a given size, it's been put in a given location, and it's been fitted into the property quite nicely. But if it were to move east, the pool could move southeast, and then the variance for the pool would no longer be an issue. Is this desirable? I don't know, but it's not impossible.
Right.
If I may, Mr. Chairman?
Absolutely.
Like to also remind that variance four is going to be related to the pool house, which is that dark, small square on the site plan. Since there, there seems to be a lot of discussion around the pool, I don't know if Mr. Chairman would find it appropriate to have the applicant come back and give any more feedback about why they selected the placement of the pool, or if that time has passed.
Right, I'm okay with that, I'm, I, I personally feel like we kind of have that information right now because of where it fit, where the pickleball court was located, and obviously, she stated that they were worried about the balls leaving that area.
Sure.
Yes, I agree that there's, there's some extraordinary circumstances with that, and if anybody has questions for the applicant, I'm more than okay with, with asking those at, at those times. It, there is, I personally believe that A is a little bit of a hard one.
I agree with, I do agree.
Guess I'm looking for any other feedback, or?
Well, I would say with there potentially being another option on the property that would not require a variance, then, that removes the exceptional extraordinary circumstances, and...
Right.
Don't know if there's a need to go through the rest of the eight items, if that's the case.
Well, I think, I mean, that, that is kind of our, our sticking point on this, is that we do, I, even, even if we find one, isn't met...
There's no sense in doing the others.
Well, there isn't, but I, I do think we, we should go through them, because I'm assuming that once we find that one isn't, we're probably going to find that the rest aren't. Yeah, but...
The thing that keeps this property even more crowded is it has three units.
Right.
If it had two units, there'd be a lot more room. The request is for this particular plan with three units.
Right.
If there were two units, you'd have all sorts of side yard. Does that, is the project still practical with two units? Again, I don't know.
Yeah.
We were told that we'd have to have three units to meet the multifamily requirement. That's why we have three.
Thank you.
Yeah, so, we were, yeah.
Yep.
Yep, that's the reason.
Completely understand, thank you.
And we thought we were doing better, because originally, they had two sets of three on that property, and a pool on the corner.
Right.
So we thought we were, like, relieving a lot of that, you know, over built.
Yep. Fair enough. Alright, so, seeing that the condition or situation of this specific piece of property for which the variance is sought is not so general or recurrent in nature, is to make reasonable practical for the formulation of general regulation for such conditions or situations. So you think that has been met?
It's been pretty much meant by A.
Right, yep.
We have an odd-shaped piece of property, where do you put things?
Right, yep, yep.
But I didn't think we felt A was met.
Right.
Yeah, I don't think A was met, at least that's the notes that I kind of took.
Right, yes, yep, yep.
So what are you saying about B, then, it is met, but A is not? I mean, I think they would fall together almost.
Yeah.
Well, it's not recurrent in nature.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion on that? I could, I could see it both ways. Uh, C, that such a variance, that such variance is necessary for the preservation and enjoyment of substantial property rights similar to that possessed by other properties in the same zoning district.
No, we're talking about the pool, is that correct?
Yeah, that is correct, yeah.
Does anybody else have a pool?
Well, I can think of a few properties that didn't get pools because of front yards.
Right.
Specifically, Indiana School.
I'm going to struggle on H as well, because, um, the pool is, is an optional, like, we're not talking about putting another condo on here, a housing unit, we're talking about a pool and a pickleball court that are non-compliant right now, but could be if there was some finagling done. I guess I'd like to see the applicant come say, hey, let us work on that, come back to you for those variances, because we just need to shove a little here, move a little here, um, I guess that's what I'd like to see.
Now, one thing we need to point out, before we go too far down that road, I, I agree with what you're saying, if a variance is denied, the applicant can't come back for a year.
Oh, sorry.
The issue I have, Randy and Brandy, is the fact that, and I'm not suggesting this happened, is very similar to the, the first meeting I was at, where there, where they, the pink, I believe it was the pink house? Where they wanted to do something, but there was an opportunity, if they did something else, okay, and then my point of view here is, I, I, I personally love it, I think it's great, I'd buy one of these, if I could. But as we look at the ordinance here, and the way it's read, and the way it's stated, with him sitting there, the fact is, is that I find it very hard, even though the property is of, it is, very difficult, and I think they've done a tremendous job. The problem is, is to accommodate these things.
Right.
The exceptional shape of the property doesn't come into play.
Correct.
And I can't give Clark that for when he writes his motion.
Right.
Because you could change it and make it, and not even, you guys wouldn't even have to come here.
Right.
Yeah, because that, that variance could be denied, yet it could be redesigned and a variance not needed.
Right, yeah.
For both of those things, I'm, I'm looking at the accessory structure, how close, I mean, I know Kelly's cursor wouldn't work, but...
Right.
I'm looking, it's so close.
It's only a few, it's only a few feet of the structure outside that line.
Technically, the whole thing's outside of it. Again, when you draw the line down the plane of the front of the building to the corner, it pretty much comes to where that corner point is.
Where are you saying the corner is? dotted line?
Yeah, so on the very bottom of the screen, like, that looks like Morse code down there. That, where that comes to a, a corner, and, you know, obviously not a ninety degree there, um, that would be approximately, from that point back, would be the side yard. Because you take the plane of the front of the building all the way through the lot line.
Wouldn't Kelly's cursor need to go farther left to get to the front of the building?
I can't even see Kelly's cursor.
It's up there, right at that corner.
Oh, it's up there, oh, there it is, yeah. The, the front of the building would be back from that. The front of the building is the building, it is not decks, it's not porches, it is...
Isn't it that dark, dark?
Yes, the dark line, right there.
That dark line.
That dark line.
Dark line.
All the way down.
Down. So it just cuts the pickleball.
And I take it the front, the front yard would be essentially parallel to the street coming off that corner of the building, is that correct? Well, the front, front yard, I think, is between the pool and the pickleball court. So, the pool right now, as requested, is very much in the front yard. Another thing to remember, too, I think is good, is if we're handling this as five separate variances, if four pass, then you've only got one that's an issue. It means the project as drawn couldn't happen, but it means that if somebody can get around the one that died.
Right.
Then it could.
Right.
So Kelly, to Randy's point, that thick black line is, that's the line of demarcation for the front yard.
Couldn't the pickleball court go in there? The swimming pool go with no issues at all? Yeah, I mean, if you swi, if you flopped them, the swimming pool and the pickleball court, I know you said you were worried about the balls, but Victoria Resort just glassed in their courts, and I walk by there all the time, nobody's hit me yet, um, now, there may be aiming, but I'm just saying, but that would, that would solve all of the issues, correct?
No, but then the, the pickleball court comes out of variance.
Yeah.
A question.
Because it's in the front yard.
I have a question.
We don't have any variances about courts in the front yard, and we don't care.
Oh, we don't?
No.
So...
There's a bit of a slope, though. That'd be an interesting pickleball game.
Right.
Well, I mean, they've got a pool there, so...
With the earlier variance we granted, that moves the building back, creating that larger front yard, and that's where it sets that corner, creating that plane to create the, if the building were built up and that variance wasn't sought, does that then potentially open up more space for that pool that's considered side yard?
I suppose it would.
You following my...
Yep.
I, I probably wouldn't do it with this project, but...
Right, I'm, I'm following what you're saying, but I, I...
That's why I'm struggling a little.
My guess is that the, the, the way it's designed, that it would not fit on the lot to be pushed up, so, because there's probably, you know, a reason, and again, we can't see the very top on that particular one, but the, the first unit up there...
I know they're all angled down, but in theory, if, if it were, say, one building that was built to, say, the five feet or up to the light lot line, then everything becomes side yard, right?
Right, yep.
Well, yeah, but that problem is that you definitely...
Which I'm not saying to do that, but that's why it becomes sticky for me about that being front yard, because everything's a front yard, but also nothing's a front yard.
Right.
I will point out that the staggered units, that's actually encouraged, or was it one time in master plans, because it keeps it from looking quite so much like a slab of wall.
Did you have a question, Kelly? I have completely lost track on if we were on D or E at this point.
Hey, when we were arguing B, but did we get to C?
Oh, we got to C, and you know that, so... Let's go to...
D.
D, okay, excellent. The strict compliance of the, with the requirements of this ordinance would be unreasonab, would unreasonably prevent the owner from using the property for permitted purpose.
I don't believe the pool needs it.
Right.
Yeah, I don't.
Yeah.
No, it doesn't.
Right.
Doesn't meet that.
Right. Uh, the variance will not be significantly detrimental to adjacent property and the surrounding neighborhood.
I agree with that.
You have to, you have to be careful with that, cause I mean, I know variances are case by case basis, but if all of a sudden we start. Giving the front yard pool the, the one, then the next one's going to expect it, and the one after that, and.
That's pretty much how we've gotten through what we have.
Right, yes, yeah, yeah. I feel like.
You can always find a bad example somewhere.
Right, yeah.
That's why I get back to B.
Right.
Being not met.
Right, yep, yeah. I feel, that's a, that's a slippery slope. Uh, F, the variance will not impair the intent and purpose of this ordinance.
The intent is not to have pools in the front yard.
There you go.
So I guess it does.
Right.
Sorry, I'm losing my microphone, sorry Lisa.
But it's not met.
Right.
It's not met.
Uh, G, that the variance requested is the minimum amount necessary to overcome or mitigate the difficulty. Well, to me, since they asked for the variance, it would be the minimum.
Well, maybe, maybe not. I mean, if the pool was back ten feet, you'd have ten le- ten feet less variance you're worried about.
Right, yeah. I don't, I, I think the problem though becomes it doesn't become an issue of how many feet it's in the front yard as much as it's in the front yard.
True, but the more intrusion.
Right, yep.
The gr- the grosser the variance, if you will.
Sure.
Let's not say it's a gross pool, it says larger number.
Yep. Uh, H, the immediate practical difficulty causing the need for the variance request was not created by the applicant.
That's interesting, and that it could be redesigned, so I think it's created due to its design.
Right, yeah, yep.
I don't think it was intentionally, like, oh, I'm gonna get a pool in the front yard kind of thing, cause, cause I can. I think it was, um, but I think it's the placement that's the problem.
This, this particular standard is pretty much based on the problems with people dividing lots secretly.
Right.
Or doing other things that essentially took a perfectly fine lot and turned it into a non-conforming lot. That's not the issue here.
Mister Chairman, if I may, um, an option we could have if we chose to. Could be to allow the applicant to postpone this part of the request, correct? And not vote on it tonight, cause if we do vote on this and it is denied, as Mister Bemis said. They cannot come back for a year for a variance related to the pool, correct?
Related to the pool, correct, yes, yes. Um, Kelly, I'm gonna let you handle that one.
So I'm double checking that, um, standard right now, and my computer just, um, it just locked me out. So, um, bear with me, but I believe the, that they would not be able to come back with the same request.
Right.
I can read that provision if you'd like.
Thank you, that would be great.
So it is, uh, section twenty-four oh six subsection five states. No request which has been denied by the ZBA shall be submitted for reconsideration within one year from the date of the original application. Unless the zoning administrator finds that at least one of the following conditions exists, and then it establishes three exceptions to that general rule. A, the conditions involving all of the reasons for the original denial have been significantly altered. B, new conditions or circumstances exist that change the nature of the original request. Or C, there exists newly discovered evidence or a falsehood previously relied upon, which is determined by the zoning administrator to be valid. So as a practical matter here, if the applicant were to come back with a significantly altered.
Right.
Uh, variance application, that would fall under twenty-four oh six five B. That the circumstances or conditions, uh, changed the nature of the original request.
It sounds good.
And a new request would require new application, new escrow fees and such. But not voting on it keeps the same application and escrow fees open until a vote is done, correct? Cause we have had applicants in the past come back to another meeting with an updated site plan. This is why I ask.
That's correct.
And for the original date, would we use the one that was originally used because there was an extension on this?
No, I would believe we would use tonight's date, because this is a, this is a new request for this pool.
Okay.
Or would it be the application date for this variance?
I would think it would be when it was determined.
What date are we asking about?
I'm sorry, what, what? If, we're trying to find out what date we're talking about.
Yeah, for the one year.
What starts the clock?
What starts the clock?
Clock for what?
Of the one year, if, if it were denied, what would, what would start that clock of the one year of not being able to come back?
The denial.
The denial, I figured, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
But if they pull it.
Right.
To be revisited, right, then there's no extra fees, no costs, just a new site plan?
I'm, I'm sorry, actually, it is, it is the, it is the original application date, which is.
I could catch Lisa, cause we have had that issue in prior meetings.
My question is, not, not the dates and such, but if we're saying that we're not gonna approve the variance because it's in the front yard.
What's going to change?
What's gonna change?
If it's not in the front yard.
If it's not in the front yard, then it doesn't require a variance.
Correct, right.
If it's just a little bit more in the front yard, I mean, I mean, it becomes a matter of degree, right?
Right, right.
So, as, and again, personal issues aside, I'm just reading the.
Yep.
As it's stated here, with him sitting there, that the extraordinary circumstances of the lot. Don't come into play here, do they?
And I do agree, I just want to make sure to be very transparent with the entire process. We've had a lot of questions on other applicants, applications in the community in the past, wanted to make sure it was clear.
Give them false hope that we're gonna, they're gonna move it five feet.
Right.
And then we're, we're gonna say, oh, we'll give you the variance. I mean, the issue is, if it's in the front yard, it's in the front yard.
And we've got four here that didn't make.
Right.
In this one.
Right.
Mister Chair, if I may, uh, so the, this is a new application dated five, nine, May ninth, twenty twenty-five.
Okay.
So the one year would start from May ninth, twenty twenty-five.
Alright.
I would, there's an updated August date that was, probably may not have come through on the photo, on the copy. That we've used as the completed application date, so they would, there's an August date that we would use rather than the May date.
Yeah, so would, the date would be whenever the application was considered completed.
Okay, alright, okay.
Can I, can I ask another question before we go on here? It's, it's, it's related. Can you go back to the site plan?
I can.
Are those, and again, I'm not familiar with the order, are those parking spots required?
It's gonna take me a minute to get back there.
Oh, computer's still locked up.
Always. It's Monday.
Mine died earlier. It must be a computer virus.
There will be a number of parking spaces required, and that would be evaluated by the planning commission. This application will still have to, um, come to the planning commission, planning commission, uh, for special land use approval.
I got it. My, my question is, is this, do the fact that they need those parking spots. Create an exceptional, more exceptionalness to the lot? That would then say, hmm, maybe you couldn't move the pool.
Uh, some of that parking is needed, not all of that area is required parking.
Is it still two parking spaces per unit?
Two per unit.
And the garages count or don't go?
They do count.
So they have fulfilled the requirements with the garages?
Yes.
Within the central business district.
Yes.
Yes.
So those, those four parking spots aren't technically required.
Right, but that's still a front yard on that side.
Yeah, alright, okay.
I see what you're trying to do, but it doesn't help because it's still the front yard, I know. It's a different front yard.
Right.
It's the other front yard.
Yeah. Creates more exceptionalness. I'm trying to get them.
Well, we still have a very exceptionally shaped property. We wouldn't be here if it wasn't so weird.
Right. Really, the, the only way, looking at, looking at the way that it is drawn, sorry, looking at the way that that is drawn. The only way that the pool falls inside the side yard is to fit within the lines coming down. The pool would have to be on a slight angle probably, like the, like the, um, building itself inside that area.
And there, there are requirements on how far it needs to be from the building and from the property line as well. That, that's my other reasoning behind being careful to not quickly den- deny the variance.
Right, yeah.
Well, that's int- that's new news.
But yeah, there, there are still.
Twenty-two twelve that pertains to pools.
Yeah, there's, there's still setback requirements for pools.
Now, we're talking here about.
Still a permitted process, so.
We're talking here about considering ways that maybe the thing can be mitigated or avoided altogether. And I like it when the ZBA does that, but I have been asked from time to time, how much horse trading are you allowed to do?
Right, yeah, yeah.
So I think it's very important that the applicant knows what their rights and their opportunities are.
Yep.
But we need to be careful that we don't precondition an approval.
Right, absolutely.
Some sort of an agreement that hasn't been made.
Absolutely, yep.
Um, Mister Chairman.
Yes.
So, so I can understand this, cause I was gonna talk about, um, when it was mentioned previously. The pickleball, the pickleball courts being moved to the east, right? Okay, and is that line also coming from the back of the house, the line going down? So it's those two parallel lines that are considered the side yard?
Yes.
So if it went beyond that, it would be in the front yard, the pickleball court?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
On a, on a normal condition, that would then become the backyard, but since it is a street, it is now a front yard again.
Right, right.
It's the only three front yarded place I think you might ever find.
I know it's rather rare to allow people to turn the entire front yard into parking lot.
Right, yeah, I was gonna say, I'm, you know.
It's a very wide driveway.
Right, yeah. So, I guess at this time. Do we have any type of motion?
Oh, should I motion on this one? I think it's important that it be documented, our discussion, because it could come back. And this is evidence. And it's also something that can be used to help decide what to do next. If it just disappears into the mud. It's more difficult for everybody.
You can make a motion to.
And each.
Or deny.
Motion to what?
You can make a motion to approve or deny.
Correct.
So.
That's what I was looking to do.
Yep.
And each one of these stand on their own. Uh, cause I was gonna do the, uh.
Uh, if we, if we find one of the things, does not meet the criteria, it, it becomes a.
And, and I think we found four, which I would put into my motion.
It would be good.
Mister Chair, if I may, to the extent that somebody is contemplating a denial motion. I would encourage either going through all of the findings and making a finding as to each of them. Or at least making a finding as to each item that you believe is not met. And that's what I have. And again. In my documentation of the four different re- areas. And, and again, um, explaining why you believe they're not met, not just concluding that they're not met. Essentially not just restating the finding itself.
Okay.
Now I'm being graded?
You feel very good with that, Clark?
Uh, I think I can get there, uh, and I guess we'll have to work through this. Well, let me, like, if, if I can review this with my, uh, fellow members. Uh, I looked at A, as options on the lot do provide other designs. Which could allow the pool in a side yard, which then would not require a variance.
Correct, yep.
Uh, D, which is strict compliance, would still allow use of the property.
Correct, yep.
F.
For the same reasons.
Uh, F, uh, the variance is actually not required. Uh, for the intended use of the property.
I would also add C, uh, that a pool, I don't see a pool as being a substantial property right.
That's, I, I think that's a, I think that's a tough one to say it's not a property right. Um, as a property owner, you have, you have the right to what fits on your property and can be permitted on your property.
If it meets the zoning ordinance.
If it meets the zoning order.
Yeah.
Again, if it's a side yard, by all means, it, again, that's, we're looking at that as a, as a general rule. But to say it's not a right of the property owner to have a pool, if it fits within the space, would, would be a little wrong.
Well, again, I, my basis for that, again, is Indiana School.
Yeah.
Where they wanted a pool in the front yard, we said no pool in the front yard, they're not allowed, there's no pool in the front yard.
Right.
So to that extent, it looks like it wasn't a right for them.
Right, gotcha.
And then H, the pool's design placement does create the variance request.
Right, yes.
Hopefully those meet with, uh, approval.
I agree with the four that Clark said. I'll argue a little bit with you on, on whether the pool is a right or not. And I'm too, I wasn't here when Indiana was permitted, whether they actually had a side yard or a backyard that they could have put a little bitty pool in, I don't know. Um, but maybe they could have, so that's my argument on that one.
Yeah, well, if they hadn't sold off the playground for other houses, they would have plenty of room.
Oh, I see, there you go.
I would make a motion then to deny the variance request. For the swimming pool located in the front yard, for the dimensional zoning variances request for five five four Williams Street. Due to the following findings. A, there are options on the lot which provide other designs. Which could allow a pool in the side yard. Which would negate the requirements of a variance. D, strict compliance would allow use of the property. F, the variance is not required for the intended use of the property. And H, the pool's design placement does create the variance request.
Little clarification on F, please, I didn't quite follow that one. Maybe you.
F?
Will not impair the intent and purpose of this ordinance.
I didn't say that. I think I said the variance is not required for the intended use of the property.
Okay, I understand now, thank you. Support?
Hasn't been supported, any other discussion on this?
Who's supported?
Uh, Don.
Thank you.
Mister Chair, if I may.
Yes.
Regarding condition F, I believe Mister Gruber's just said that. That the variance is not necessary for the, what, did you say the intended purpose of the? Of, of the, I said in use of the property with regards to the, I guess, use of the property, uh. And so I, I think that's a bit different than what F is discussing. Okay. Ms. Nichols' comments before, I think, would be a sufficient basis for finding that this is not met. And that was that the zoning ordinance specifically contemplates that pools will not be allowed in the front yard. So allowing a variance here would be contrary to the clear intent of the zoning ordinance to not allow pools in the front yard. Okay, that sounds like a great, uh, uh, someone else would wanna change the ordinance. Change, or change that motion. I'm not gonna change the motion, cause it's, motion's been made and supported, I think it would be best then to make an amendment to the motion.
Right.
Then we vote on the amendment and then vote on the motion.
Right.
Okay, well, I move that the motion be amended, so to reword item F, the variance could impair the intent and purpose of this ordinance, which specifically prohibits pools in the front yard.
Support.
All right, so, so that has been moved and supported. I guess, let's start with the, whoa, man, you guys are killing me, right?
The amendment to the motion.
Let's start with the amendment to the, uh, motion. Um.
Like a roll call?
Yeah, Samantha, could we please have a roll call?
Burrows?
Yes.
Gruber?
Yes.
Kupiers?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Beliki?
Yes.
Bemis?
Yes.
Timmer?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. All right, so now we're back to the original motion.
The amended motion.
Right, the amended motion, not the original, I'm sorry, thank you. Any more discussion on that before we vote? All right, seeing none, if we could have another roll call, Samantha.
Gruber?
Yes.
Kupiers?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Beliki?
Yes.
Bemis?
Yes.
Burrows?
Yes.
Timmer?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. So, moving on to the pool house.
Let's cut to the chase, Randy, it's the same issue, right, as the pool?
Yeah, yeah.
I mean.
Yeah, and so a- again, because, because the ordinance doesn't allow for accessory structures in the front yard, um, it, it would be very similar, so, um, you know. My guess is we're gonna, we're gonna have the same findings, but technically, we should go through the list.
Do you need to go through them, or can I just make a motion?
I'd leave that to discretion of the, uh, body, but, I, I mean, I personally think that there's been sufficient discussion that you could probably base a motion on the discussion from the previous item.
Okay.
Cause we still have to get to-
Right, yes, yeah.
One big concern.
Yeah, yes, yes. Yeah, so, um, yeah, I, I think that would be completely fine, as long as the attorney finds that to be okay, that if somebody would like to make a motion on that, based on the previous findings that we just had.
I move that the variance be denied for the pool house for the same reasons as stated in the denial of the variance of the pool in the front yard.
Support.
It's been moved and supported, any other discussion on it? Do we find that to be a sufficient motion and basis-
I didn't see anybody's finger go to a button.
Right, yeah.
Y- yes, the, the rationale is essentially all of the reasons that Mr. Gruber stated for the last motion.
Okay, all right, well, seeing no further discussion, Samantha, one more time, please.
Kupiers?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Beliki?
Yes.
Bemis?
Yes.
Burrows?
Yes.
Gruber?
Yes.
Timmer?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Now for the one I'm sure you guys have all been waiting for. Number three, so we have in front of us now the variance request.
Hold on, Randy, before we get launched into this, I just wanna clarify, the pickleball court, there is no ordinance, anything, that states that they can't move that wherever they want to.
There are no ordinances pertaining to pickleball courts.
Got it.
But I, I believe we would treat that as an accessory structure. I need to double check the, um, the regulations. Pickleball's not regulated separately from, let's say, tennis. Um, so I will need to double check the, the regulations for an outdoor court.
I think that may be very important to our applicant.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Typically, that's, that's a side yard or rear yard item, but I, I would double check that.
Okay, go ahead, sorry. Oh, no worries. All right, so, on the height, so the applicant is requesting a height variance for an overall height of fifty feet, or fifty-five feet, I'm sorry. Um, so for everyone that was here last year when we went through this, there was discussion on the addition of the fourth story, which was a storage room slash mechanical equipment. Um, and at that time, we granted a variance for the fourth story. At that point, it was still within the forty-five feet of allotted height that we had in the CBD. So, at this point, really all we're looking at, I believe on this one, is the height. We've already granted the, the fourth story, so now it, it becomes an issue of the height.
Now, am I correct that the intended elevation of the top of the structure now is the same as it was before? It's just that the ground is moved?
Exactly.
Okay, yeah, I, yeah, that's, that, that kind of is one of my questions on that. So, um, if you don't mind coming back up for just a second, I, I guess I do have a question on that.
Yeah.
So on, now that you've actually had some, some engineered drawings done.
Right.
And we're finding out that we're, we're going in a little bit deeper here, and obviously now there's the average grade, um, that has come into play.
Yes.
The overall intent of the building is still the same?
Yes.
Okay.
Forty-five feet.
Okay.
Now, in my mind, when we were meeting with the engineer, and we met with Brad too, like, they said, well, we'll just make it ten more feet, but the intent all along has been to have the structure forty-five feet. That's what we, not, not lost in that though, it's because we looked at like, all right, if we gotta take it from the average, and we're taking that down to forty, we didn't want the building to be a flat roofed building.
Sure.
And it was just taking the five feet out to make it forty, because you lost your, your five feet, you're starting five feet lower. You know?
Right.
Because of that average height of the hill.
Now, if you're starting five feet lower, and before we were saying forty-five feet, but the variance request is for fifty-five feet.
Right, and I didn't throw that in there, I was, in my mind, it was like, well, we needed fifty. Actually, I wanted to request a variance from having the average height of the hill, having the plane, the mean plane, which is six hundred feet, be the, you know, going forty-five feet from there, rather than forty-five feet from halfway between the bottom of the hill and the top of the hill. And then I was told that that actually isn't allowed, that we wouldn't be able to request that. And I know there was a question raised last year when I was here, about, well, where are you gonna build that building from? You know, you've got Broadway, and you have the hill, and I thought, oh, it's, you know, taking the same thing. But the whole intent, and you can even phrase that, is to have that building be forty-five feet tall, but not, I don't know, maybe it would be fifty-five, because you have to, if there's any way to get around that having to be, have your finished grades start at the medium elevation between the top of the hill and the bottom of the hill, then so be it. Cause we want a building that's forty-five feet tall, but our forty-five feet, when we're starting to dig, is gonna be from, essentially the parking lot height, right? Not five feet below that.
Yep.
Does that make sense?
So, I, I-
Doesn't make sense to me, then, it doesn't why I-
So when we look at the original drawings from the May twenty-nine, twenty-four, it looks like you were measuring from Broadway Street and going up forty feet. And now it's going up fifty-five feet, so it's fifteen feet?
Now, we're measuring, we can't measure from Broadway, we have to measure from halfway between the top of the hill on Williams Street and the bottom of the hill on William Street, the average grade there, so we can't take it from the Broadway elevation.
And there's a- There's a ten-foot difference, is that correct?
It's always been that way.
Actually, it's-
I was on zoning, I think I'd need it.
Approximately five feet, but I don't have, I'm, and I'm not trying to go cheap on this, but it's, just to get the drawings I got, for the, for the, um, request, this very, variance request was another eight hundred dollars. So I'm just trying to be practical with spending the money and having, um, Lightman come over and redo the topo. But Brad was the one that suggested that we just say, add ten feet to it, not five feet to it. Because he said, then, if there's some irregularity between the average height of the top of the hill and the bottom of the hill, you've kinda got a little bit of flex in there.
Right.
That's probably another place, the old ordinance essentially made it midline, be if on-
Up the building.
Uh, no, actually, if the front of the building was X feet above sea level, and the back of the building was Y feet above sea level, uh, it was measured from halfway between those two. I don't know that the new ordinance has written that one.
Yeah, they've not done that any longer.
S- and, and what is on the third, or the, the, the level up there, is that like a, a sitting area?
Yeah, you're allowed to have a, a sun deck.
Yeah, I see the sun deck, but I meant the building part, is that like, uh, an upstairs bar?
Variance for up to thirty feet, that's unconditioned space there, so we can stash our stuff in there. And it also will cover the top of the elevator and the stairwell. These units are gonna have elevators in them. That hasn't changed.
Right, and I'm assuming the elevator goes all the way to that floor?
Yes.
Yeah, so you need space above it.
So is that the mechanical equipment that's being referred to, is the elevator?
I mean, it could end up having an air conditioning slit or something on it, I don't know, but.
You know, the way it used to be, the William Street side would have been considered essentially a basement. And then the first floor was what would be on the Broadway side. And that's what I was talking about with the condo right down the street from you, how it magically grew another story, it's because it used to not be considered a story for the parking garage.
That would give them two basements.
So you're asking for fifty-five feet, and you probably aren't even gonna use all that, is that correct?
Right, that's the whole, cause every foot costs dollars too.
My concern on that is the stipulation, it has to be the absolute minimum necessary
Right.
to get the variance, that's why I would not want to approve more than what was really needed.
Right. Which then you would have to stipulate in there that it would be what is absolutely needed, no greater than. Versus just saying what it was.
And if we add forty-five before, and the variance changed where the starting point is, and you thought that was five feet, did the variance change start where the, the, the measuring point is? That's, that's, I'm, I'm still trying to go around and around on what changed from the original application. We should've known where the starting point is, correct?
Right, yeah, my, my, so, as long as I've been in the building industry, it has always been from the median line of both.
Always been the median line.
Right. My guess is what happened is, is that once this went to, you know, an engineered site plan, and they said, well, we have this elevation here, we have this elevation here, just within the parking lot itself, now all of a sudden it was, how do you get this, because you can't lower this, so you gotta raise this. And then, once all that was taken into account with that median line, that's why we're, where we are.
And that's part of why the original variance was brought to us, we had a, a rough sub-site plan, but the property owner didn't wanna invest into the engineered plans, that, which is significant without that variance first, which brings us up to date here.
Well, and that's why I'm, I'm looking at, we now have that extra five feet, why that wouldn't be a better route to go is, we've got five, we've, we've already got something on the table, we can extend that. I'm all, I'm all for allowing that extension, the project is continuing to go forward, which is what we wanna see. Everybody has delays in their projects, that happens all over our city, and I think we've delayed some, and lo and behold, the projects got built, which is awesome. Uh, but instead of the extra ten, you know, I'm more apt to give the five that we found, after the engineered drawings.
As a reminder, this project will still need to go to planning after it leaves here.
Also.
Can't wait.
We, we can't really, or should not really, grant a variance on the basis of who owns the property.
No, I'm-
Uh, if this property were to change hands, if you already found a really rich buyer, and they came in and we give them five feet more variance, it was really necessary, we'd see a new building five feet taller, I can pretty much guarantee. And that would not be our intention or yours.
No.
I had that list, that property listed for a few years before, um, our partners and I decided to buy it. There wasn't any interest in it, so, because it's not gonna be fun to build on.
Right, I, I just know, a lot of things over the years where we approved something because, well, this is the way it is, and it looks fine. And five or ten years later, it wasn't that way anymore, and boy, we regret it. So that's why variances really should be for the minimum amount, and not for a pad.
Right, and that's what I'm kinda looking at, is an additional five beyond what was originally.
Is there a way that you can tie it to the actual elevation of the, the hill? Like, when we actually get over there with a, a laser, you don't use a transit anymore, but get the actual, all the spots of the elevation of the top of that hill and the bottom?
Well, that, none of that has changed since the original- Yeah, but none of that has changed, that, that's all stuff that we would've known.
So we don't, you don't have that yet?
No.
Interesting, how did they come up with the, or is that, are we just saying?
We had a topo, man.
Okay.
But I've been told by everyone that I, we have to get that redone, because it's been long enough.
Oh, right, yeah, absolutely.
It's been done, and again, without certain variances that we need, this is not gonna do the project, so.
Right, okay, I'm just wondering that, I figured this fifty-five came from the engineers saying, this is where you're going to land.
Well, that's what-
That's what Brad was suggesting.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so, that makes me worry that that could be off.
Well, if you look at the drawing that, there's two Brads I'm working with, there's Brad Cotterbaugh, and then there's Brad Potter. You look at this, he's got, he's showing this right here, but we didn't go over there with a, a-
Right.
A surveyor, you know, with a laser, and actually get those to verify them.
Right. I mean, I, I, I completely see why you are where you are with this, totally understand it. As a builder, this is the way things happen, and it will change the minute that it comes out of the ground. Because something will affect it, and it will change s- six inches to a foot. Because that's the way things happen. So.
It just, we, we're not trying to make this look like a Sears Tower.
Right, yeah.
In South Haven, so.
Mr. Chair, if I can just ask a clarifying question through the chair to Ms. Getman Desat. Cause I, I think we've heard a couple of different things right now, so I just wanna confirm for the record. The reason for the change from forty-five feet to fifty-five feet is because the applicant is changing the proposal to be, originally last year, the, their application indicated it would be forty feet measured from Broadway. They're now proposing- They're now proposing to be fifty feet, is that correct? There's been a change to the design of the proposal, not a change to how the height is measured in the zoning ordinance?
That's true, and also, there is a slight change in the measure, in the height measurement. I believe the previous ordinance measured average grade at a point that was five feet from the, from the wall of the structure. This ordinance is actually, um, less than that, we measure from a point that is within two feet of the walls of the building.
But the, the proposed height of this building, measured from Broadway, would be taller than what was proposed last year?
Yes, it, it, I believe that to be the case.
I just wanted to confirm that for the record, thank you.
The, the proposal is showing, and if we look at the table and, in the Williams and Works staff report, on page ten of the packet. Nope, I'm not quite right there, so he's just got the fifty-five feet there. Um, there was a page of the staff report, I'll find, where he mentions the, the height from the Broadway side and the height from the Williams Street side. Finding F, thank you.
In finding F on page eleven.
But it was always forty-five feet, because that's what was allowed. Last year when we got the variance, it was forty-five, not forty.
Right, yeah.
And then we were told we couldn't take it from, we couldn't decide that Broadway was gonna be the.
The median.
The, yeah, finished floor elevation or whatever from Broadway, it had come off of, um, Williams Street.
So, just to, just to clarify, Mr. Chair, if I may, so I'm looking at the packet from last year, page forty. It, it, the proposal was for forty-five feet, but it was forty feet from Broadway.
Okay.
So that has now, the proposal would now increase to fifty feet from Broadway, from forty-five measured at average grade to fifty-five measured at average grade.
Okay. So.
So I'm asking for fifty-five, but I'm actually getting fifty there.
Right.
Okay, that works. I'm leaving this up to engineers, just to let you know.
Right, so.
I DIY a lot of things, but not that.
So, so interestingly enough, and, and now I remember you telling me this earlier, Kelly. This, this is a new one on me that I am not familiar with and have never come across in, in my years of building, is that it is measured two feet from the wall. That is different, because that, to me, changes everything about this. Because if you're two feet from the wall versus the, the average grade of the property itself, you can create your own to a degree. And that, however that got changed over the years is kind of scary. Because basically, if you took the level of that parking lot right now, and I'm gonna, I'm just gonna assume that that parking lot probably has two feet of slope in it, just as a rough number, from one end to the other. If that building falls generally within that parking lot area, within that two feet, especially now that it's, you know, we've granted a variance that it's, you know, twenty-seven feet off of the property line, that grade now becomes what's up there currently, not the low point. Because it becomes that, two feet off of that wall. Which then probably negates the fifty-five feet.
It's not tall.
I think we don't have enough information to make a steady decision on this, unless we just want to deny it.
Right, I, I don't, I personally don't think it will, if we are measuring from two feet from the wall, I, I, I don't think it'll exceed the forty-five.
For the uninformed.
Uh-huh.
What wall are you talking about?
Any wall of that building that they are now erecting on that property. So every wall of that building.
Can I come closer?
Yeah.
Just. I'm not sure that this is what's gonna happen here.
Right, exactly.
I didn't want this, my bedroom looking out there as I walk, but.
Right.
I think that if this happens here, then that would have to be, that would determine the, right?
Correct.
Because you've got two feet from the.
Correct.
From the edge.
Right, correct, yep.
That might be wrong.
Yep, okay. That, in that, in that very well could be. Because, yeah, it really did cut down into that, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a better picture than seeing it there versus this, okay, all right. Yeah, that, that could very well be then where they came up with that, so.
This is a pattern.
Okay.
Also, you're, you're saying two feet to the exterior of the walls, is that correct?
Right.
I do want to say this is not necessarily what it's gonna look like. We haven't finished the interior, inside design, so that'll have an effect on windows and.
Well, what happens, we grant variances and then site plan is planning commission's issue.
Right.
So we can never really grant variances on the basis of something that doesn't exist yet. All we can do is say, here's your envelope. And this is a sensible sized envelope, it's the envelope that allow you to meet the intent of the ordinance.
Yeah, we had a forty-five foot envelope before.
It would, it would seem to me, if you didn't cut into the hill as much, you, you probably would maintain it. And I'm assuming that's just for the basement windows on that side.
Mr. Chairman, question for Kelly. Kelly, if we, um, were to deny this request, would that impact their original variance and take that off the table? Or do they, from last year, do they still have that variance granted from last year? This doesn't override that, does that?
No, and, and there's a re, there is a request in front of the board to grant an extension on the request from last year.
What's the, uh, ticking clock on that?
So, um, there was a six-month extension that was granted, um, that will expire in November. I hope I'm saying the correct month, um, that's in the packet as well.
I think it was November when we talked earlier today.
And, um, because administratively, the zoning administrator can grant a six-month extension, so May to November. So, um, the ZBA has to con, consider any requests beyond that.
And does that have to be a formal request by the applicant?
That request did come to you formally, from the applicant, it is on the table for the.
And, and can we extend it from this date forward, or can we extend it from the November date forward?
Um, that's dependent upon your motion.
Okay. I mean, seeing that it's out there, if we'd be cutting off a couple of months that we could potentially provide, that's what I look at it from that standpoint. But, you know, worst case, there's a forty-five foot. Four-story.
Right.
Variance right there that can live from November forward if we put that motion together.
Right.
Till November twenty-sixth.
Mr. Chairman, if we were to make a motion to extend that clock on the original variance that already exists, do we still have to vote on this fifty-five foot request? Or could this be something carried on to a future meeting? Or would we need to close that up tonight?
I guess that's a great question for Kelly, because I would think we would have to vote on it since it's in front of us.
Uh, we don't.
Or do, can we postpone?
We do not have to vote at the meeting, I think it's what, thirty days or something of the sort.
Okay.
But, because things like this come up.
Right.
And ZBA needs to have time to resolve questions. And very often, these questions cannot be answered the night of the meeting, as we're seeing right now. So there's no, as far as I understand, there is no reason for us to feel obligated to grant or deny that particular variance tonight, probably in a month.
The, my only issue with that is, is that I don't know how we have that information a month from now. Is, and again, not my worry to, to come up with that, but I, it is a concern that when do we have that information, that this is going to be yet? And if that is where they're at right now, saying that this is where we really believe it has to be, then.
Well, if, if we were to extend the date on the variance that was granted for a certain period of time, then we can look and see, how long do we have to make a decision? Which I think may be thirty days, but I'm not certain of that, things have changed. If the answer comes in that time, great. If it doesn't, then we have to do what we have to do anyway.
Right.
But we do not, I believe, have to decide yes or no on this particular variance tonight.
I guess.
The attorney may find unfairly wrong.
Yeah, I, I guess I'd, I'd refer back on that one. It's illegal as far as.
I'm, I'm looking through the, uh, zoning ordinance now, I do not know offhand if there is a deadline, and it sounds like Kelly is not sure at the moment either, but I, I am looking through there.
I mean, we can continue things, I believe, until we get further necessary information.
Right.
Just as a court can continue until they get necessary information, and in a way, as EBA is a court.
And we have had applications where we have done that in the past, that's why I brought it up.
Right.
Is there necessary information you need from me or just you on how you're supposed to proceed?
Well, yeah, that, that would be the, I think what, what everyone is trying to get at is, again, to meet the minimum necessary, where you think it's going to probably be fifty feet, but they're saying, you know, ask for fifty-five. It, in order for a board to grant the variance, we're gonna look for the absolute minimum needed.
So then that, that means I need to go and get all my drawings done for something that I don't know I'm even going to be able to have.
Right, and that's, yeah.
Or you can go the other route and tell your designer you got forty-five feet to work with.
Right, yeah.
I mean, there's more than one way to look at it.
Yeah, and that, that becomes.
Well, that forty-five feet to work with, when that forty-five feet comes from the midway point of that hill, means we have, that we're gonna lose five feet off of the structure.
Well, that's my question.
Yeah.
Do we have an approved unified point of view on how we measure this? So if it's two feet, if it's two feet off the wall, is it every wall because it is a staggered unit?
We, yes, we would, it, we would take average, it'd be average grade, so we would take, we would take the highest and lowest points
Right.
on the property.
Yeah.
Within two feet of the wall.
Yeah.
So now she, she has her instructions on how to measure this.
Right, right.
And then she needs to go back and either invest or not invest.
Right.
To figure out, based on that measurement.
Right, yeah.
Tight.
Which says to me that you eliminate, and again, I don't want to tell you how to build something, that you eliminate the, the basement windows on that one side and bring that across as dirt, and you'll probably meet it. Because that now becomes the longest point of that building, if that is not there any longer, you probably will meet it.
Does that meet it, if there's a window wall there? Then that window wall becomes within two feet of the.
We don't, we wouldn't count a window wall.
Generally count.
If there's a window wall there, it's just the building.
Right, yeah, but again, the dirt would have to be up. You know what I, are you following what I'm saying on that one? Yeah. So, yeah, I.
So let me clarify, do you know how to measure this now?
Yeah.
Okay.
And we all agree that that's how we're gonna measure it. Not gonna be from Broadway, it's not gonna be from the parking lot, it's not gonna be from, it's gonna be. Yes, no, maybe?
Average grade, average grade, two feet, two feet from the walls.
Because, because again, now we come back to the situation of where on our next step, if we grant the extension on this, and you can keep it within that forty-five feet from the average grade, you don't have to come back.
Right. Because I get rid of the pool too, and then I don't need to.
Right, either get rid of or move it to the side yard.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
So would our next item then be to vote to continue this hearing until clear information is provided as to the, the minimum necessary variance?
Is that how we would structure such a?
Is that a motion?
Well, I was asking if that's going to be the motion, if it is, I'll make it.
And does that mean that that's something we need to take up the next meeting that we have? And if she's not ready, we can continue that? I know there's some things you can only leave on the table, and we're not tabling this, because that is a different term.
It's different than postponing. Postpone until the requested information is provided.
If, if that's legal, that's the motion I would make.
I guess I'm not clear what specifically is the requested information.
So, so the requested information would be the, um, minimum height necessary for this project? Or the maximum height necessary, I'm sorry, for this project?
Given the edits that they just gave her.
Right.
The minimum variance request.
The minimum variance, right, yes, request, yeah.
From the applicant.
Yes, from the applicant.
This is a.
Undoubtedly in discussion with city staff, including the attorney who knows how to figure these things out.
I do have a question, actually a comment. In the measuring two feet from the walls and the building is staggered, would it be two feet from each of the walls?
So, high point, low point again.
Yeah. And then my other question was, um, I just, uh, related to the, when it was heard before, is, do you know the height of the, um, storage, what, what, on the fourth floor? That separate unit where the mechanical is kept, do we know the?
Well, all included, it's gonna be forty-five feet.
Do we know separately? Because I, I remember that there was some reference in the previous time this was heard, that there was, um, some conversation about adjusting down, that you thought you could adjust down. And I wondered if you had changed that.
I, I quit spending any money on this, except this latest eight hundred, when, as soon as I found out that those new ordinances were adopted. And we were in a situation where we didn't have to get variances, so I just stopped. I don't believe in putting the cart before the horse, which would be like having my full set of plans and all that, because I think it's a waste of money to do that.
No, I understand, I, I just wondered if that had been, I know it had been mentioned in the previous one, so I just wondered if you had that. But that's okay, thank you.
So now, it's two feet though from the top of the hill, not from the average of the hill. It's two feet from that top of, let's say, Williams Street is, here's the top of Williams Street. It's two feet in from the top of Williams Street, and then it's not affected by the, the average grade.
It's two feet, it's two feet from where you're gonna build the wall. So if you take whatever your setback request was there, twenty-seven feet, you, you would literally have to then have a surveyor put your points, put your four corners. That's where, within, within the two feet of that, is where you're taking your measurements from.
I think probably the reason for that is, let's imagine it's a larger property with a hill on it over here, but you're building over here.
Right.
The idea is, how high is this thing going to be where the building sits?
Right.
So I suppose the two feet is so you're not caught by that hill in the backyard. Or the riverbed.
I like that two feet thing.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's different, like I say, that's a, that's a new one, so.
Okay.
So is that gonna be a motion?
I move that action upon this variance, somebody else can put the right words in for it, this variance, be postponed pending, uh, a determination of what. of what the minimum necessary variance would be in order to make the decision. Is that confusing enough?
Again, I would just clarify that that's a determination from the applicant, not from-
Determination from the applicant, now the applicant can make that determination any way they want, but they'll be bound by whatever comes out of it.
Right, just wanna clarify, we're, we're not waiting on staff to do any research, we are waiting on additional information from the applicant before this is brought back.
That is my intention, yes.
Support.
It's been moved and supported, any more discussion on that? I'm gonna get Samantha just a moment here again, cause she is very busy. Whenever you're ready.
Nichols?
Yes.
Bolecki?
Yes.
Bemis?
Yes.
Burrows?
Yes.
Gruber?
Yes.
Coupures?
Yes.
Timmer?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Alright, so, now, this should be a fairly easy one.
We need to do the motion for the extension?
Oh, yeah, that's what the, that's what we're going on to do now.
That's where I was gonna head next.
Yep, yep.
I guess, Chairman, if you would allow me, uh, I would make a motion to extend the, uh, extend the twenty-twenty-four variance granted to five-five-four William Street until, uh, November of twenty-twenty-six.
Support.
And, and as in discussion, I picked a date that would end at what was granted by staff in November, and I just figured, seeing that, instead of taking off a couple of months, just to get the extension, just continuing it from there.
I agree, I think that's fair.
I thought we could, it was extended to November of twenty-twenty-five, and that we were adding a six months to that.
Uh, city staff added six months, and that brought it to November twenty-twenty-five. It's in our purview to decide how much we extend, I believe.
Oh, we don't, we are not limited to six months?
Correct.
Okay.
It's only if they don't let the ZBA look at it.
Right.
I know under the current building conditions, things are not as fast as they used to be.
Isn't that true?
Yeah, any, uh, other discussion before we vote on it? Any feel pretty good? I think one more time, Samantha.
Bolecki?
Yes.
Bemis?
Yes.
Burrows?
Yes.
Gruber?
Yes.
Coupures?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Timmer?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Alright. Wow. That was one to get through. So, sorry guys, I know it probably wasn't everything you were hoping for, but hopefully some of it, so, thank you. Alright, wow, moving on with everything, uh, we are down to Commissioner comments, and we'll start with Kristen.
I have none.
None? Clark?
Uh, I do have one, and it was brought up, uh, on another, for Planning Commission, and I thought that this should be something we should look at, uh, cause Lisa brought it up to, up to my attention, and I wasn't aware, and that was, uh, I wasn't sure of the zoning board of appeals, uh, conflict of interest policy. And I wanted to make sure that it was consistent with other policies. In planning, we do have one area where if, uh, that property is adjacent to a council or a Planning Commission member, that member can decide that they could be unbiased and then not be considered a conflict of interest, if they can make that decision. And I just think that's a really hard decision to have to make an individual make. I thought it might be easier to take a statement like that out, and I'm not sure if that's still in our policy. But my suggestion would be that we look at that as a board, uh, next business meeting, and then make a determination, we're good with the policy or we're not good with the policy. Cause I think we can make those decisions as, uh, as zoning board. No one way or the other, I just think if everyone looked at it and said, we're good with it, or it, it might be something to review. That's it, that's my only comment.
Amy?
I don't have any comments. Speechless, sir.
Well, I wanna thank Clark for carrying the water tonight, making the motions.
Thank you.
I'm a rookie, I don't know how long it's gonna be till I make a motion, but, um, thank you for doing that, and, um, and, uh, great to be here.
Couple things, uh, first on what you were talking about. We will want to make sure that we look at what the state says about conflict of interest, and how it's normally handled. The other thing I want to say is, I really appreciate the attorney's input into this meeting, it was so helpful.
He's blushing, you can't see it there.
Well, I thank him anyway.
Randy?
No comments tonight.
Oh, yeah, everybody's so quiet tonight. I just wanna thank all of you, appreciate every, everything tonight, um, great motions, Clark. Bunch of, got them all there.
You only screwed up once?
Yeah, well, thanks buddy, I appreciate that.
No, I, I gotta, I gotta tell you, keeping motions in line and then making an amendment to a motion, I've seen them get pretty crazy, because you make them and then you kinda button them all back up again. You did a nice job, that's not easy.
Right, wow, same to you for doing all the motions, I appreciate it, so. And thank you, Kelly, as always, for everything that you do. Thank you for all your advice tonight, it's very helpful to make sure that we are always staying in line. And, uh, with that, I'd, uh, take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Support.
And we are adjourned.